Thank you, Kristin. Welcome council, staff and residents to the regular meeting for Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025, and we're being streamed live. So at 6:30, I'll call the meeting to order with
Residents to the regular
with the regular or with the land acknowledgement. We are meeting today on the traditional territory of many nations, including the Huron-Windat, Anishinaabe and the Houdonisoni peoples. We acknowledge our shared obligation to respect, honor and sustain these lands and the natural resources contained within. We honor their cultures and celebrate their commitment to this land. We would also like to acknowledge the Mohawk and Algonquin nations, whose traditional and unceded territory we are gathered upon today. Hastings County is situated on treaty land that is steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations, Métis and Inuit people. Next, I need a motion that the agenda for the regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmaroon Lake for Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025 be approved as presented. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Eric, second Ron? Any questions or discussion on that agenda? All in favor? That's carried. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Being none, I'll move on to the mayor's report. September the 2nd, I presided over the regular meeting of Marmaroon Lake Council. September the 5th, I attended the office to sign documents and meet with the C A O. September the 9th, I presided over a special meeting of council. At 1 o'clock that day, I attended the Southeast Board of Health Governance Meeting in Belleville. September the 10th, I participated in a telephone meeting with representatives from Inbridge Gas. At 6 o'clock, I attended an appreciation dinner provided by the Early Childhood Education Administration in Madoc. September the 14th, I attended the Memorial Park to support the annual Terry Fox Run. September the 15th, I attended a special meeting in Bancroft to support Hastings County in dealing with the serious problem of homelessness and addictions. September the 16th, I attended the Hastings County Planning and Development, Finance, Property and Personnel and Special Council Meeting. At 1 o'clock that day, I met with Dr. Oglaza, Medical Officer of Health for the Southeast Board of Health to prepare the agenda for the upcoming meeting. September 22nd, I attended the annual A G M for the COPE Organization in Madoc. September 24th, I chaired the regular meeting of the Southeast Board of Health in Kingston. The 25th, I attended Hastings County Council. 26th, I chaired the Personnel Committee Meeting. 27th, I attended a fire training event in Limerick Township. Ministry of Natural Resources provided training and demonstrations, and I took the opportunity to thank the crew who fought the fires in the north of our community. That afternoon, I attended the Scarecrow Festival. Congratulations to the winners and participants of the contests. And thank you to the community volunteer group for organizing the event and for the sponsors and volunteers and businesses. October 2nd, I attended the Short Film Festival, compliments of the Marmaroon Lake Library. Marmaroon was well represented, and thank you to the participants for your imagination and talent. Marmaroon was well represented. October the 6th, I chaired a meeting of the newly merged Boards of Health to discuss best practices and planning to ensure success of the mergers. And today I attended the Southeast Board of Health Governance Committee Meeting in Kingston, and tonight is our regular Marmaroon Lake Council Meeting. Thank you. There's no public meetings and there are no delegations. We have public input. Is there anybody that wishes to speak under public input? No? Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Next, I need a motion that the foregoing minutes of the regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmaroon Lake held Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 be approved as presented. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Ron, in second, Mike? Any discussion on those minutes? Go ahead, Jane.
I wish to make the public aware that there was, in my opinion, a travesty of municipal justice in this whole Lions Agreement issue. Four out of five councillors voted to support the agreement. I was not afforded the opportunity to question any items on the agreement, nor was I afforded the opportunity to comment on any items on the agreement. On July 2nd, 2024, part of the motion that the agreement is supplied for council and the public for the benefit and understanding of all parties involved. The public had no ability to understand the Lions Agreement. Therefore, all parties were not involved in this decision process. I offered that comment in relation to the minutes as recorded.
Are you wishing to amend the minutes, Jane?
I don't know how to amend the minutes. There's nothing I can amend. Four out of five voted for it. I was the one that did not, and I just wish to make that comment.
Do we need to do anything further, Kristin? No? Okay, thank you. Any further comments on the minutes? All in favor? Thank you. The minutes of the special regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmaroon Lake held Tuesday, September the 9th, 2025. The recommendation is that the foregoing minutes of the special regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmaroon Lake held Tuesday, September the 9th, 2025 be approved as presented. Can I have a mover and a seconder for those minutes, please? Eric? And second, Ron? Any discussion on those minutes? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Staff reports. Kristin, municipal clerk regarding the 2025 Municipal Office Holiday Hours. Excuse me. And the recommendation is the council accept the Municipal Office Holiday Closure Report dated October 7th, 2025. And further that the municipal office be closed from December 24th, 2025 at noon to January the 2nd, 2026, inclusive reopening at 8 o'clock a.m. on January the 5th, 2026. Can I have a mover and a seconder for that report, please? Jane and Mike? Any comments or questions about that report? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Can't believe we're dealing with Christmas. Next, regarding 2026 council meeting schedule. And it's the procedural by 2024-74 procedural bylaw and 2026 council meeting schedule. And the recommendation is the council accept the 2026 council meeting schedule report dated October 7th, 2025. And the council direct staff to change the current council meeting schedule so the planning committee of adjustment and regular meetings of council are all scheduled to begin at 5:30 p.m. on the first and third Tuesday of every month, excepting January, July and August, in brackets, each having one meeting each. Let council direct staff to amend procedural bylaw 2024-74 accordingly and bring it back for council's approval. And further that the 2026 council meeting date set out in the attachment to this report be approved. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Jane, and second? Mike? Any comments or questions on that report? Eric and then Jane?
I certainly appreciate recognizing the staff time and that we're not being necessarily the most efficient with the hours, the time, sorry, spent in between planning and regular committee. I personally don't have a problem with the meeting times being at 5:30 and 6:30. Running for council, this is what we signed up for to make ourselves available at that time. And my concern is just the public knowing when to show up. And I entrust that the municipality is going to communicate that clearly. Because with one minute meeting ending and the next meeting starting, we may take a brief recess. But I think it's going to be really important that the public understands when they can show up for regular council, especially those wishing to have public input. Looking back at the meetings that have taken place over the past year, since January 25, we've had 16 scheduled committee meetings. Only eight of those under planning actually happened. So generally, half the time, we're starting at 6:30 anyway. So I, just for information, I'd just like to see a plan for communication if this does pass so that the public is aware.
Thanks, Eric. Jane?
Kristin? Curfew, item 1.17. Even though, even though the meetings could potentially be moved up one hour, it doesn't change the curfew time of 10 p.m.?
That would be up to council if they wanted that to be updated as well.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristin, for putting this report together because I do think the time, sometimes a planning meeting is less than five minutes. And, and you know, we have all that sort of time in between. And, and I think this is, this is a better use of our time. And also in the winter months, I think it'll, for those of us that have to travel, I do realize we signed up for this when we, when we did. But a couple of bad experiences last year. Of course, it was an extremely kind of difficult winter too. So I appreciate the change. It's, go ahead, Ron?
Yeah, I as well agree. But I'm just thinking, last year with the budget meeting, I think 6 o'clock, Kristin, it was 6 o'clock, I think. So could we, are we allowed to change the meetings if we need to, like the budget meeting? Because maybe 5:30 is too early for that meeting.
Go ahead, Kristin.
Definitely for the 2025 budget, I I'd have to check to be sure about the previous year. It was a special meeting. So we scheduled the meeting. It happened at 6 o'clock with the sole purpose of receiving input from the public.
Right.
So if council and staff felt that, you know, we wanted to push it later to ensure that people who are at work are able to get here, as that is one of our, our busier meetings, that's certainly doable.
Do we need to have that in the wording or is it?
Well, like Kristin said, it's a special meeting. So we can pretty much set the time to what works. And just one more, Kristin, to for Eric's comfort level as to communication. I'm sure you have a plan to, to put this on the website or
Yeah, we'd have to have a series of announcements to make sure that everybody was on the same page. The intention is not to cut out the opportunity for public input. I see sort of time being wasted for council and for staff. And, you know, tax dollars at work while staff sits here waiting for the next meeting to start. So that was the motivation, not interested in making it harder for people to participate.
Absolutely. Well, and there's always the option of watching it online, I guess, or attending virtually if, if that'll always be an option. So regardless of the time change. Okay, thank you. So any further comments or questions? I'll call all in favor. That's carried. Thank you. Next. Jeff, manager Parks and Recreation Facilities regarding Public Skating Community Event. And the recommendation is that council accept this Public Skating Community Event Report dated October the 7th, 2025. For information, let council direct staff to schedule three hours of free public skating for October 25th from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. to welcome the community back to the Marmaroon Arena for the 2025-26 ice season. And further that council provide the community hall for this event free of charge, where complimentary hot dogs will be provided and served by the Marmaroon Crow Valley Lions Club. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Ron and Eric? Any comments on that? Go ahead, Jane.
I just have a question and I'm just, I just want to make sure of the location. Jeff, because I've seen people walking around the arena and skates, which is okay. Are the, are the, are the hot dogs proposed to be served upstairs or downstairs?
Through the Chair to councillor Lakatos, I believe we will be planning to serve the hot dogs upstairs. So you can come for drop-in style anytime over the three hours and then your refreshments will be served upstairs.
Okay, okay. I guess people with skates have to take them off. Okay.
I, I just want to compliment Jeff on working together collaboratively with the Lions Club in the community. I think this is a good start off to the season and
Right of order? I had the floor. Did I not?
So through Chair, councillor Lakatos, you were, you, you had more questions?
Well, I Go ahead.
Yes, sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought you were finished your discussion. Just go ahead.
Financial impact, $300 to sponsor three hours of skating. Who pays the $300? Are we getting businesses in the area?
Through the Chair to councillor Lakatos, that would be the municipality who is footing our own bill, so to speak, that we would be offering this to welcome the community back. And we would be providing our own.
Okay. And then the, the $120 to facilitate a three-hour rental of the community hall? What, I don't understand how that fits in then?
That's basically to provide the space for the Crow Valley Lions Club to, they've offered to graciously to provide the hot dogs for the event. This is providing them with the space in order to facilitate that, and we would have tables and chairs out so that, like any general meeting area, people could congregate.
So are, are they paying the 120 or we're giving it to them in recognition of $120?
Yes, we are giving it to them based on, I have, it's on my behalf that I have asked for the Lions to help us contribute to this event, and they have graciously accepted.
Okay, and I think you've done a great job. It is, I've seen the arena booked. It's great. So you've done an amazing job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Go ahead, John.
So through your chair to answer councillor Lakatos. So it is free to the public. It isn't a Lions specific thing. They are helping part of that. But just for clarity, they're working with us, the municipality. So we would be effectively waiving what would be a normal fee. But again, because it's for the public and not specifically just for Lions, just so that it's completely understood. Thank you, councillor.
Eric?
Just appreciation towards staff and Jeff for this initiative. I think it's really important. It was something that was obviously very missed last year. So I think this is a great initiative. I would just suggest maybe although insurance paid for the chiller replacement and not the grant, we could possibly, if this is approved, reached out to some of those that did take the time to support our grant application and forward them an invite to this event as well in appreciation for their support of our arena and celebration of it being back open.
Thanks. Like I said, I commend Jeff for, you know, initiating this. This is a great idea, and I think it shows good community spirit. So thank you again to you and your staff. So any further comments? So I'll call to a vote, all in favor? That's carried. Next is John, Planning Services Agreement. The recommendation is that council receive the Planning Services Agreement Hastings County and Marmaroon Lake and Amendment to Schedule C of User Fee Bylaw 2025-26 Report dated October the 7th, 2025. Let council approve the final Planning Services Agreement between Hastings County and Marmaroon Lake, authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the municipality. And further that the amended user fee bylaw 2025 dash, I think that should say 20, or no, 56, including the corresponding changes to Schedule C be recommended for council approval. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Mike, second? Ron? Any comments or questions for that report? Eric?
In terms of Spark, just for clarification, this is a three-year contract that we're going into. And then after that, we have six months' notice to remove. I really hope the county is going to be able to provide us some good data on turnaround and use from residents, because this is something we're going to have to evaluate in the future. Hopefully it works really well. And ideally, this program should self-fund. The fees collected will offset the cost to run it. Hopefully there won't be any overrun and the county runs this responsibly and efficiently to ensure that, so it doesn't have any effect on the levy going forward.
Thanks, Eric. John, could you just maybe comment? You sort of explained to us earlier the benefits of, of participating in this as it relates to some of the updates that we, we need.
Sure. So through your chair to council, this is something that, again, I brought forward in early days in July 15th. It's something that has been on the radar from the county, looking at the municipalities. My understanding, I think 11 of the 14 municipalities in Hastings are looking at this. For me, it's near and dear to my heart as a professional planner to let go of this control. At the same time, as councillor Dowell sort of framed it, I think the idea is to look at the idea of a consistent and predictable experience for applicants to come forward with an idea of a promised timeline of either a yes or a no, with an ability to be able to work with someone who's a point, a lead on that. So any of these inquiries that go on, since I started here, I've had a number of these inquiries. But at the same time, they get lengthened out because, again, in the absence of a format, some formal structure around it, this gives it that. In looking at that, the last page and the attachment to the agreement are timelines and turnarounds. So I think again, as councillor Dowell talked about, the idea of how closely we match that and meet those timelines will show ultimately after three years, the success of this year over year. For me and the discussions I had with the county, Kristin as well, this will help free up some of her time because she spent a lot of time as a clerk working on notices, a lot of the paperwork that comes with this. This will help streamline that, free up a bit of time on her, on her workload that way. I had in my discussions talked about some of the more strategic things. We have a zoning bylaw that's 2003 that needs updating. We have an O P that's about seven, eight years out of date. We, on top of that, have a secondary plan and some other challenges. An industrial park that we'd like to be able to capitalize on. So in part of the discussions on working on some of those bigger strategic items, have support from the county to do that. At the same time, working with them to the point that even on Monday, we sat down with Emily, who has been certainly known around here for the planning side from the county, also a new planner, Hannah Presley, who was hired into the Spark Program, worked for Center Hastings before myself, having a pre-consultation with a business owner in town. So again, already starting to see the benefits of doing that in a structured way. So my hope is that, again, this will give predictability and transparency and the idea of there. I know some of the comments I've had is a concern about the cost. But that's why you have in front of you as well as Schedule C, which was rather than layering local costs as well on top of the application, we're looking at recommending having that done. So even though everything is more expensive, it would have been even more so if we kept our current process and then layered the county on top of that. I think this is overall, has a good potential to be a winning project. My hope is that every, we do have Planning Services Committee that will meet regularly throughout the year. And I'll be bringing a report with the county as well every year to see how are we doing year after year and hopefully tracking towards that success. I hopefully, Chair, that's what you were looking for.
Yeah, and you mentioned also that we'll still have the opportunity for input to severance applications and so forth. So it retains the local component to the process.
Through your chair, I apologize. Yes. Zoning and those decisions are still being made at the local level. And from the county's perspective, they'll be working with the local municipality to support decisions and supporting development that we see not overriding that. So again, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anything further, Eric?
Sir, just quickly, that, that's great that that's what they're going to provide. And hopefully our residents see an improved level of service, especially in relation to work that, where the county has been involved in the past. Given that all these other municipalities are also joining this program, we definitely should take advantage and try and jump on them early for that support for things like official plan to move that forward.
I also think that it's an opportunity for consistency in applying the Planning Act and all the various, you know, elements of it across Hastings County so that one municipality isn't, you know, getting service at one level and another one at another level. This should provide a, you know, more standard sort of level of service. So anything further, Jane?
Just want to make sure I comprehend because maybe if I don't, somebody else out there doesn't either. So, okay, so the, the charges you've scratched, you've marked those off, taken them off. So my understanding is we're, we're not providing the service here anymore. Therefore, we don't have that expense. But the services are going through the county and they're collecting the fees for providing the service that we once provided. Okay. And yes, and like
Through your chair, just elaborate, sorry to, I hope I'm not interrupting councillor. So we could have, in what I had presented in the July 15th report, if we had kept our local fees in place and also our level of effort, there would have been effectively two layers. Because if that's the case, the county would have been charging $850 just for commenting fee. In this case, in this scenario with this new agreement, the only thing that we're keeping that was there in Schedule C before is the Park and Lou, the Cash and Loua Park Land, which rightfully still should stay at the local level. But otherwise, we get the involvement, we get the participation, the contribution. But the work, the front-ending of it, the point of contact will be the county.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And that's what I comprehended, and I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Anything further? So all in favor? That's carried. Next is the C A O status update for October 2025. And the recommendation is that council receive the C A O status update October 2025 Report dated October the 7th, 2025. For information, can I have a mover and a seconder? Jane? Second? Eric? Any comments or questions for John on that report? Eric?
I just asked, maybe on the next one, could we add the E V charger station to this?
So through your chair to councillor Dowell, absolutely. I know it's one that has stalled. I know that in my last discussions with Jewel, that part of the delay has been conversations of getting Hydro One to come out and sort of identify their ability to be able to connect to which, which source of electricity, but notwithstanding, has gone a long way. The other part I would add is also the idea of the fallen soldier sidewalk as well. I'll also add that. That's a budgetary item, but I'll also add that to the list as well.
Good. Anything further? Anyone? All in favor? That's carried. Next, Dylan's report. The report for the Supply of Winter Sand, 2025 to 2026. The recommendation is that council accept the Supply Treatment and Stockpile of Winter Sand Report dated October the 7th, 2025. And further that council award the contract to Danford Construction Limited for the Supply Treatment and Stockpile of Winter Sand for the 2025-26 Winter Season for $15.90 per tonne plus H S T. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Ron? Second? Jane? Any questions or comments on that report? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Second, Dylan's reports, award of supply of fuel. Recommendation is that council accept the Supply and Delivery of Diesel Fuels and Gasoline Report dated October the 7th, 2025. Let council award the contract to W O Stinson and Sun Limited, excuse me, for a two-year term at a cost of $1,001, that $1.31 per litre for regular unleaded fuel and $1.1175 per litre of diesel fuel and $1.0275 per litre for colored diesel fuel or $149,787.50 plus H S T per year based on average fuel quantity. The council accept and include the optional five-year term at a price of $1.031 per litre for regular unleaded fuel, $1.1175 per litre for diesel fuel and $1.0275 per litre for colored diesel fuel or $149,787.50 plus H S T per year based on average fuel quantity. And further that council accept and include the Provisional Fuel Card Lock System for up to a five-year term at a price of $10,954 plus H S T. Can I have a mover and a seconder for that, please? Ron? Second, Jane? Any comments or question, Ron?
Through the chair to Dylan. Dylan, this card lock system, how do we benefit by the $10,000 it's going to cost us? Where would we gain or where would we benefit from that? Or where we benefit from that?
Yep, through your chair to Counselor Derek. So it'll be a digital tracking system. Every employee will have a fob with a number. All the vehicle, the whole fleet will have a number as well, so that file will be registered to it. So we'll be able to track exact quantities of fuel. It has a software system for fuel savings. It all links to the mileage. If we get a fuel audit, everything's digital. It's right there. A click of a button. Currently, right now, our fuel tracking is next to nothing just because our pumps are so outdated. So this gives us real life data. It tracks it all.
So by doing this, is that something that would be tied to like the fuel safety?
Correct. Yeah, this ties to everything. It also ties into our asset management. It's a real life budget document. It's everything is right there. I can even see exactly what truck is the hardest on fuel, if it's been idling too much. It just eyes in the sky season. It's also a security measure, too.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Anything, any other questions on that report? Mike?
I think Ron's question covered everything that I was going to ask. So basically, we're just paying for the computer system and the pumps and the, do we pay for the tanks too, Dylan, or is that part of this package?
Through your chair, no, so the fuel tanks, the pumps, everything is supplied as per the the included price. It's essentially a rental, so we have no maintenance on those. They're brand new, up-to-date tanks with extremely large pumps. Everything is current to date. Longer hoses, and that's kind of the reason why this came up. Our tanks have expired. It's never been tended in a long, long time. It is a large quantity, so this gives everybody a fair and equal chance on it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Dylan. Thanks. Anything further? All in favor? That's carried. Next, the committee and board reports. Eastern Ontario Trails Alliance, the minutes twenty twenty five dash six dash twelve Yoda minutes. Destination Ontario Campaign Summary, the Yoda Tourism Economic Impact Report. And the Marmar Lake Public Library, the minutes of June the nineteenth twenty twenty five. And Economic Development Advisory Committee, minutes of August the twenty seventh twenty twenty five. And the recommendation is that the foregoing minutes and reports of the committees and boards listed are hereby received for information. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Eric, second Jane, any comments on any of those? Things go ahead, Jane?
On the library report, I just want to offer that at that time I was still the municipal board member on the on the library board. There's also a comment that questions were asked at the meeting rather than in in advance. I would just like to make the public aware that I have asked questions on on email and they were never answered. So other than that, the the reports fine.
Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
I'd like to speak to the Yoda Minutes as well as Economic Development Advisory Committee. The Eastern Ontario Trails Alliance, I have asked them to include this Destination Ontario summary. This is as a result of a event that the Association put on called Rockin' the Trails, which is which which was a large ATV rally in Perth. There was over a thousand ATVs that came out. Just for information for the public and council and staff so that they can see this. Destination Ontario backed this event with assisting in organization and funding. This brought in thirteen hundred people. You can see with this event and some of the stats here that sixty-six percent came from over forty kilometers away. So events like this really work well here. Tweed was the location for this event this year. It's going to be Tweed again next year, but as this event develops, which sounds like it's going to be an annual thing, there's potential down the road for that event to locate here and other communities within Hastings County. All the Airbnbs, all the hotels, motels that were available, they all filled up because of the influx of people for this event. So it was a real success and not just for Tweed, but for neighboring communities and potential for Marmar Lake down the road as well, since we have many venues close to the trail that would be capable of hosting this event. Jumping to the Economic Development Advisory Committee minutes, we don't usually have delegations in this committee, but we were very fortunate to have a delegation from Strong Towns. Norm Petersman, who was invited by one of our Economic Development Advisory Committee members, came and spoke about small town mindset. He spoke to having hospitality, sorry, hospitality mindset. We talked about revitalization of the downtown core, starting with small changes that can make big differences. And discussion is going to ensue at the next Economic Development Committee Meeting Advisory Committee regarding that delegation. As well, the committee is hard at work on the Ambassador Program, further developing that program. You may start seeing posters like this around the community at different public locations. The committee feels it's important to advertise and get this program out there to connect visitors or new members of the community or people that are already here in our community that have questions. So that initiative is continuing to grow and be further organized. So thank you to the committee members for all their work on that project.
Thank you, Eric. Anything further? That's a really good initiative. I I had a few comments made to me and I commend you for your committee for getting to this stage. It's it's helpful for sure.
Yeah, well, thank you to the members because they've done a great job conceptualizing this and then putting it together to come up with a program.
Good. Thank you. Anything further on any of those minutes? All in favor? That's carried. Correspondence for direction. The Marmar Agricultural Society, the Marmar Fair Support Request, and the recommendation is that council provide direction to staff. So can I get somebody to make a motion to give direction to staff? Go ahead, Ron.
I'd like to to discuss this at budget time. That'd be my motion.
That's the direction is yes, your motion. Can I get a seconder for that, Eric? Any discussion on that motion? Go ahead, Eric.
I'd maybe ask prior to budget if they'd be willing to come forward as a delegation to give us some more information on what their numbers were, what their plans are for going into twenty twenty six and how the funds would be used. Again, it's funds that belong to the public and the municipality. So it would be good to have a better understanding of use of those funds.
Go ahead, John.
So thank you through Chair to the Council. One of the things that is outstanding on the project list, but it's something that started Lions Agreement was the first one. That same format roughly will be a template for the Ag Society. I have a meeting set for next week, so in terms of looking at that, we'll have that system. Hopefully that agreement will be a little bit easier, faster to put forward now that we've put all the hard work into the one. We'll use that to model the second one and then answer the questions those council raised tonight in terms of looking at that, then bring it forward as part of the budget process.
Thanks. Just clarification, Eric, did you want that included in the motion as they come as a delegation or is you just making that as?
It doesn't have to be. I just think it would be beneficial for everyone and help us all be better informed to. Sure. If you want to, if Ron's willing to amend that.
Sure. Okay, we probably need to give Kristen some wording then to defer the recommendation to the budget or the request to the twenty twenty six budget and request that the Marmar Fair or Margaret Agricultural Society come with as a delegation. Between now and then, sure. Anything further on on that motion? All in favor? That's carried. Darnell Nichols Christmas tour request that council provide direction to staff. Again, they're looking to use the parking lot for across the street where normally the the market is held in the summer. So does somebody want to make a recommendation on that request? Go ahead, Jane.
I recommend that staff look into providing this, the the space for the Heart of Hastings. However, I also recommend that the Heart of Hastings brings back how they're going to look after safety and traffic as it is eight, eight o'clock to to six PM and I'm just worried about traffic and sundown and that. I don't I don't know how you word that.
Sorry, is this Heart of Hastings? No, it's not Part of Hastings. Go ahead, Kristen.
Through the Chair to Council, from my understanding, this is a group of individuals who don't have an official spot on that Christmas tour. And so because they don't have a storefront, they're looking for somewhere that would act somewhat like a storefront. So I don't believe they would be on the map. I don't think they would be an official stop on the tour. So it's not really related. It's related, but it's not. So I think they're looking for somewhere that they would be visible so that when people are out going from stop to stop, they'd be driving by and and pull in. But I don't think having staff reach out to the people who organize the tour would actually be related to this request.
And I don't think this is much, this is quite just like the summer market. So I don't think the it would be any different, but they they do have to provide the proper insurance and so forth. So so Jane, do you want to make a motion?
Yes. That council reach out to the organizers of the Christmas tour. I don't even know what they're calling themselves then. However, to ensure proper procedures are followed and the municipality is added as additional insured. Okay. Yes, to approve their their request. And that that they 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 add the municipality as additional insured.
So can we get a seconder for that that motion? Oh, Mike, sorry. You're seconding it, Mike? Okay. Anything further, Eric?
Just general comment. I think although I appreciate the local nature of this request, I think if this group wanted to be involved in the Heart of Hastings Tour or the Marmar Christmas Market, which is part of the Heart of Hastings Tour, they should possibly reach out to the organizers of that event if they want to formally be part of it. Very early in the season to either have a spot at the Legion, which is a stop on the tour for small vendors or find another location that can be approved and end up on the official map.
John?
If I may draw attention to Counselor Dowell, I think the correspondence to the clerk indicates that they've tried to do that for a number of years unsuccessfully. So I think in the absence of being able to do exactly as the counselor had articulated, this is sort of their backup plan.
Go ahead, Eric.
I I I did have a conversation with the letter writer and although in the past, yes, they have. I think this is just something next year that if they want to participate, should be a more proactive and formalized request to the organizers. The organizers of the Heart of Hastings Tour put a lot of work in and start planning in the spring almost and flyers and all the promotional material and maps are printed midsummer. So they do need to get involved in this process very early, not at the last minute.
Ron?
Yeah, my my concern about this property is we don't even own it. We lease it. We didn't lease it. We use it. We initially got it for parking. That's what we got it for from Petro or I think it's Petro BP, whoever. And I just don't want it to turn into something that an event center, a place where people are going to want to use constantly. I don't think that's what it was designed to do. Like I said, it was overflow parking is all we got it for. And I'd say we don't own it. So I think we need to reach out to the owners. When there's something going to go on, we need to ask them what their opinion is. And maybe we have, I don't know, but I just I just know that are we opening a door we can't shut?
John?
If I if I may, just to add to the conversation. So I think there is discussion certainly before I started last year about this. We have an agreement with Suncor, if I'm not mistaken, as the owner. And with that, with access to the property for whatever purposes, part of those purposes would be for overflow parking, but we've also used that for farmers market in some months. This would be what I would consider on the shoulder season, that same type of use. And I guess if there's concern, it would be again, something that has to do exactly with the farmers market folks, the vendors do, which is provide the right insurance. But I think again, the use is consistent, similar to what the farmers market is. It's just on the shoulder season as opposed to and then purposely focusing on the on the Christmas season. So I'm not sure if that adds to the conversation or alleviates your concern.
It does. So we're going to focus on farmers markets and nothing else for there. You know, we're going to, they could, they could want to put anything in there.
I think like farmers market, they come to us for approval, right? I I try and, so this is, this is very same thing, really. It's just a different time of the year. And to Eric's point, you know, with the Heart of Hastings, I think that Christmas tour, I think this is is separate from that. And maybe because they didn't get on board, maybe on time to to be part of that. I'm not sure what the circumstances. But I think any use of that lot for these types of things, they need to come to us on an individual basis to get approval to use.
I guess that's my point, that we need to keep a handle on it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Eric.
Well, and this is not a site that's in the user free by law. It's not an identified facility that we have formalized site plans for or even proper insurance for alternative uses like this. So it's a it's a precedent, right? And we're always in this hard situation where if we approve this, then the next applicant that wants to use it. How can we say no? The farmer's market has a very specific intent. It's supposed to help draw people into town and get people to stop off the highway during the the summer season. So I I see that as a bit different.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
I don't agree. I I I think it's exactly the same as a farmer's market. These people have already tried to get into the other one. The other one's full. So they want to set up a spot where they can sell their stuff too. It's going to bring people into town and maybe more because the Heart of Hastings is scattered all over the all over the municipalities in the area. I don't see it's going to change anything. Everybody's still going to have to come on to us every time. They're still going to supply their own insurance, which we've asked the farmer's market to do. So I don't see what the harm is in letting those people come in here. They made an application. We've looked at it. We say yes or we say no. So going forward, you know, and I can understand, you know, maybe it's in the middle of the wintertime. It would cause problems because we'd have to keep the area plowed better, I guess. But I don't see it's any different than the farmer's market, except it's November seventh, eighth, ninth and fifteenth. So I I would support them. At least they're trying.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Anything further? So I'll call to a question. All in favor? So that that carries. Thank you. Building Service, Building Inspection Services Board. The August twenty twenty five report. And the recommendation is that council receive the report for information. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Ron, second Jane? Any discussion? Mike, I saw your hand up. Are you just going to second that?
I was going to second that, but I just wanted to. I'm just trying to find the exact number. Marmar Lake, we had nine new houses built, full, complete houses built in the area. And I think that's, I don't think I've ever seen us have that money before. We've had a lot of renovations and things. But I'm glad to see that we're we are getting housing built in this area. But we're still, one, two, three, we're still second from the bottom though. So it'd be nice to hopefully push that a little more in the coming years.
Thanks, Mike. Anything further on that? All in. Thanks, Mike. Anything further on that? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, the August twenty twenty five newsletter. The recommendation is the council receive the newsletter for information. Can I have a mover in a second or for that, please? Mike and Eric, any comments or questions on the newsletter? Mike?
I don't know about the rest of you, but there is a, a section in there where you can do a speed test on your local telephone provider and things like that and submit the information to the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus or whatever. And I think anybody who's having problems should definitely do that. So it's just a case of doing a speed test on your phone and I presume give them your location and submit the information. That'll help them to fill in any gaps and that that are around here. Cause I know up here where we are, uh, it's mostly gap. There is not a lot of places that you can get a good signal up here. Um, and the other thing is right now they're running about a year behind of what they promised they would do with the towers. They've cleared a base on our area a year, over a year ago, and I don't think it's supposed to get done until next year now. So, which sort of ticks me off because they got a pile of government money to put in all these new towers. And now they're running over a year behind. So anyways, cellphone service up here is bad.
Thanks, Mike. Anything further? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is, um, the request for, uh, Rally of the Tall Pines, request for the use of the old Hastings Road. And the recommendation is that council grant permission to the Rally of the Tall Pines to run two passes of the rally on the Old Hastings Road on November twenty second, twenty twenty five, acknowledging that the Rally of the Tall Pines is responsible to repair any damage to the road or property that occurs during the rally, that organizers advise the manager of transportation services of the dates and times in order to complete an inspection before and after the event, and that the municipality of Marmar and Lake is not liable for any damages resulting from the lack of guardrails at the approaches to the Glenmire Bridge. Can I have a mover in a second or please? Mike and Eric, any comments? This is an annual event. I don't think anything changes much from year to year. Um, so any comments? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, Cynthia Reed, um, her request for the road closure for the Trunk and Treat twenty twenty five for the Lions Club. And the recommendation is that council approve the request of the Marmar Coal Valley Lions Club to close Forsyth Street on October thirty first, twenty twenty five, from four o'clock to eight o'clock P M. For their Trunk and Treat event and direct the Lions Club to notify emergency services of the closure. And I have a mover in a second or Ron and Eric, any discussion on that request? Being none, all in favor? I just wanna say I went last year. I thought it was great, like it's a good place, the kids are safe, they're, um, you know, uh, well supervised and there's no unknowns. Um, and plus the entertainment was pretty good. People dressed up and, and, you know, had lots of things like that going on, music. Um, next, the Southeast Public Health Unit Media Release. And the recommendation is the council receive the release for information. Can I have a mover in a second or for that one, please? Mike and Jane, any comments? I just wanted to say that that's our new branding that was just approved, um, last, uh, I, of the twenty ninth anyway of September. And, uh, we're one of the first of the merge boards to have our new branding in place. So, anyway, um, any questions or comments on that? All in favor? That's carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash fifty six is the user fee by law. Um, being a bylaw to establish user fees within the municipality of Marmar and Lake. Can I have a mover in a second or for that, please? Eric, Jane, any comments? Jane?
I guess I saw something and I may just have to, um, yeah, um, in the, when we were discussing the Lions agreement, we took out the word Lions Hall. And, um, on page one twenty-three in the, in the user fees, we're calling it the Community Center uh, hyphen Lions Hall. I think we should remove the word Lions Hall, the wording Lions Hall. Cause it's, it's the community center, the community belongs to, to the people. Oh, there's the center belongs to the people. Oh, you are? Shall I start off from the beginning?
Go ahead, Kristen. Through the Chair to Councilor Lacatos, um, we would need, not really sure what we would need. I guess a motion to accept the bylaw as amended if. We have to, we have. We have a version of the bylaw that we've already recommended for council approval. So now we're approving that version of the bylaw. Um, so I think I would probably need a motion to amend the bylaw further and a second or for that. And I'm, I think I would probably have to bring back that version of the bylaw. I'm not sure if I can do it on the fly.
And we just make an amendment to the bylaw, a recommended amendment to the bylaw, vote on that. And then, like you said, um, has the bylaw as amended.
I, I think so.
Okay. We'll, we'll say it's okay. So Jane, do you wanna make a, um, a motion to amend the bylaw?
I make a motion to amend the wording on the facility rental fees to, um, remove the wording Lions Hall and just leave it as C- Community Center.
So can I get a second or for that, for that motion? Go ahead. Go ahead, John. Can I get a second or for that motion? Again, can I get a second or for that motion? That, that motion failed. So can we get, um, a motion to approve this bylaw, the user fee within bylaw? Twenty twenty five dash fifty six, the user fee by law. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
We have a mover in a second or for that bylaw.
Right. So all in favor? That's carried. Notice of motions. Um, Eric?
Okay, I have a notice of motion, uh, that I put forward, uh, just for clarification. Uh, we did address this matter already when the, uh, Legion came forward as a delegation. However, they were not granted permission that. Sorry. I will proceed with reading the notice of motion. That council, that the council of the municipality of Marmar and Lake grant permission to the Royal Canadian Legion Branch two, three, seven Marmara to install a fallen soldier crosswalk in the downtown core on the existing unmarked crosswalk on Forsyth Street as per the requests brought to camp on September second, twenty twenty five. And that the date for road closures, materials used and any additional required signage and final image be reviewed and approved prior to installation by the manager of Transportation Services.
Thank you, Eric. Um, any announcements? Jane?
I have announcement and, um, I just need, need to use my phone to look at my calendar, please. Um, I wish to make, um, the clerk, council and rate payers aware that I will be missing two meetings. Um, I will be absent for the meeting of, um, what do we, um, October seventh now. I, I will, I will be absent on October twenty first. And I will be absent on November fourth, returning for our November eighteenth meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Jane or Eric?
Um, I'd just like to thank the Marmar's Community Events Group, specifically Angela Hudson, Bernie Donaldson and Debbie Staret, uh, for all the work that they put in into organizing the, uh, Scarecrow Festival downtown. Uh, it was another great year. Lots of local businesses as well as volunteers stepped up to, uh, help with decorations, help with different activity stations throughout town and lots of things for the kids to do. Special thanks as well to Whitley Newman Insurance, uh, who, uh, covered the insurance for the event for the day. Um, I appreciate all the hard work there. Uh, I'd also like to congratulate the winners from the, from Marmar in the Small Town Shorts Film Festival. I attended the event at the Aaron Theater last weekend was happy to see all the Marmar faces in the crowd. And, uh, I confirm for you that the Marmar and Lake, uh, moviegoers were also the loudest ones in the crowd. Um, tomorrow, Wednesday at three thirty, the library has a great information session in partnership with HPE Alzheimer's Society, addressing aging and the senses. It's a free event. No registration is required. You can reach out to the library, check out their Facebook page, uh, for more information if you're interested in attending that. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else have anything further? Okay, um, so, um, thank you. Um, we'll move into closed session. Um, I need a motion that council will proceed into a closed meeting session under the Municipal Act, Section two thirty-nine, two B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And it's regarding the Personnel Committee Minutes. Uh, E, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board regarding the potential litigation update. And B, labor relations or employee negotiations regarding union negot- negotiations. Can I get a mover in a second or to go into closed? Jane, second? Ron? Any questions? All in favor? That's carried. So we'll move into.